Everybody knows if you're not speaking, if you can mute yourself to cut down on background noise. If there is excessive noise, I will mute you and you will need to unmute yourself to speak.
Thank you. It's a paid political announcement and we also-
And is Joe on? Mueller?
No, he will join us.
Okay.
The one thing I wanted to remind everyone that this will be our last team management electronic meeting. So we'll revert back to in-person on our Thursday night planning board meetings. So we had a project vector work session. Nick, do you have anything scheduled for July?
None are scheduled for July.
All right. I'm sure that will change. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make it.
I'll make the motion.
Joe? Okay, Leif and then Kevin, did you second it?
Joe.
Joe. Oh, hi, Joe. So all in favor?
Hi.
Joe, I.
Yeah, I.
Leif, I.
Doug, I.
Kevin, I.
Welcome. Kevin, okay, oh, perfect, we got a much a full house. First item on the agenda is ONX-1 subdivision. This is a motion to declare project ONX subdivision, project vector and project vector site plan review as type 1 actions under C-COR and further for the planning board declare itself lead agency under C-COR. I'd like to call for a motion for a public hearing on July 8th at 7:05 on the subdivision and site plan.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Kathy?
Yep.
All in favor?
Kathy, I.
Doug, I.
Kevin, I.
Peter, I. Okay. Those are items 1 and 2.
And did that include the motion for to declare type 1 and lead agency?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They're both, I read them both together. Thank you. Heinz subdivision. This is a public hearing. Is the people, is there anybody here from the public that have an interest in the Heinz subdivision, 1 lot into 2 in a residential R0 district?
Mr. Weber, Chuck White here from Project Vector. Are you all set with that? Do you need any input from us or we're good to go?
Good to go.
Okay, wonderful. Just wanted to double check. Thank you all. Nicholas, we'll circle back with you.
We had a very productive work session. We're looking forward to seeing the progress.
Okay, well, we'll have some updated documents for you on Monday. Thank you all.
We saw the EAF and appreciative of that.
Yep, okay, thank you. I appreciate that as well. You all have a great evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, back to the Heinz subdivision. Is there anybody from the public that has an interest in this public hearing? Okay, hearing none. I asked to waive, let me see if I read this right here. To waive the reading, is that accurate here? Is that? Jamie?
Yeah, just wait the reading of the public notice that it was published. So if there can be a motion to that effect in a second.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, Kathy.
I'll second.
Leif, all in favor?
Kathy, I.
Leif, I.
Kevin, I.
Joe, I.
And if we can, in that the-
What was the motion for? I'm sorry, to close the public meeting?
No, no, to waive the reading of the notice and simultaneously open the public hearing.
Okay.
So I had asked before, I'll ask again, if there was any member of the public that has an interest to speak in regard to this simple subdivision.
Well, this is not the simple subdivision. This is the Heinz, right?
It's the second here.
Yeah, so the Heinz-
Oliver, you got me out of order here.
Yeah, I did. So that's the Heinz subdivision.
All right. Okay, we waived the reading.
So if, Emily, is there anyone on the queue wanting to represent the public?
Nobody has a hand raised. I don't, I don't see any, anything.
Okay, we reviewed this and I want to be sure because sometimes our board members have, not everyone's at all the same meetings, but it's relatively a simple subdivision. Does anybody have any questions from the board?
Was there a finding regarding the property, I'm sorry, the building on the property and its use?
Andy, I'll let you answer that.
Yes, but Andy, answer it.
Sorry, I have trouble unmuting myself. You'd think I'd get this straight by now. Yeah, we did have a finding on it, that it is a single-family home on it. It's set up, bedroom, kitchen, bathroom, et cetera. So they're currently doing a renovation on that and it's, it was determined to be a single-family home.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I am, is Chris Danaher on the line?
I am.
Yep.
Hi, Chris. Chris and I had a brief meeting today and we reviewed two documents that he presented. One is the declaration of covenants and restrictions on the forever wild conservation area that was supposed to have been filed with the original subdivision. I have reviewed it, it's in good order, but it's not, it's neither signed nor filed. So he has assured me that that's going to be signed and filed and we do have a condition in there about that. So, and that is shown on the original Beryl Digney subdivision. The other thing that we talked about was part of Mark Parrish's letter and it was the utility easement. So in, in Mark's letter, he talked about that part of the road being dedicated to the town, but that's really not what we need. What the town says is an easement and it needs to be a very comprehensive easement. Chris and I talked about that, that involves all manner of easements that we may ever need to think about ever. Don't know what they are, you know, it's going to be sewer. Who knows what Jeff Bezos or whoever comes up with next, that the town would have an easement for all things and that should be sufficient, so.
Okay.
And I think, I think that was it. Chris, does that accurately reflect our conversation?
Jamie, how do we, how do we regulate or make sure that those are all filed?
We're not even going to let them file this subdivision map until those are filed.
Gotcha, okay.
And I talked to my client about that and that's fine, so I will finalize those, get them in for execution and record it and provide copies to Jamie.
Jamie, do we need a motion to approve, to, to close the public hearing?
We do.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion and may I have it seconded?
Kevin, seconds.
Okay, Kevin, all in favor?
Kathy, I.
Leif raised his hand, Doug raised his hand.
Kevin, I.
Peter, I. Joe? Okay, motion to approve the subdivision plan is presented with the following findings and conditions. Findings, the parcel herein sought to be subdivided as part of a subdivision entitled the Beryl R. Digney subdivision approved by this board in 2019. The applicant now seeks a further subdivision of parcel 1B of the Beryl R. Digney subdivision into lot 1B-1 and lot 1B-2. Lot 1B-1 is confirming, is a conforming building parcel under RO zoning district. The most significant result of this re-division is that the lot 1B-2 will be one, a 1-acre lot with approximately 197.83 feet of road frontage on Woodchuck Hill. Lot 1B-2 has an existing structure therein currently indicated on the map as a 1-story wood barn. The bulk regulation of the codes are met by, provided the structure on the lot 1B-2 is a residential dwelling, is, as accessory structures are not permitted as primary use, uses in R0 district. This board is interested in the preservation of the barn structure as a historical attribute of this area of Woodchuck Hill Road. When approving the original subdivision, this applicant has now presented proof that the facade of the barn structure shall be maintained, however, and conformed by the code enforcement officer of the town of, of the town. Structure is in fact a separate single-family residence according to he, with all other bulk regulation of our-1 zone having been met, the lot 1B-2 is also conforming lot under the zoning code. Board has reviewed the EAF of the applicant and issues a negative seeker declaration for the subdivision, finding no significant adverse environmental impacts by the reason of the subdivision herein. Conditions, number 1, the structure on lot 1B-2 must at all times be maintained as a single-family residence and may not be utilized as an accessory structure because an accessory use structure may not be the primary use on a lot, our O zoning. The reference 2, 1-story wood barn must be removed from the plan and replaced with single-family structure. 2, declaration of covenants and restrictions submitted to the planning board attorney relating to the quote "forever wild conservation" end quote area which has been required to be filed in connection with approval of the Beryl R. Digney subdivision approval by this board in 2019 must be executed by all parcel owners of the parcels affected by and said covenants and restrictions. The final declaration of the covenants and restrictions must be approved by the planning board attorney and filed with the county of Anadaga prior to the chairperson signing new and approved subdivision map herein. 3, applicant must provide a written executed permanent utility easement to the town for easement, for the easement located along Woodchuck Hill Road as noted on the subdivision plan. The final easement shall be to the satisfaction of the planning board attorney and executed by all owners of parcels which are affected by the easement. The easement is intended to cover easement to the town for all utilities, including those which may be semi-private in nature such as fiber optic cable, et cetera. Final utility easement must be approved by the planning board attorney and filed with the county of Anadaga prior to the chairperson signing the new subdivision map herein. 4, the applicant must file the subdivision map in Anadaga County Clerk's Office in accordance with the rules, provided a copy of the stamped filed map with the town, Department of Planning and Zoning. Chris, are you all set with that? As Red?
I am.
Hey, Peter, I have one question. Is that going to have separate utilities as well? There's no septic system that utility extended down through that property, right?
Well-
Is that a, Andy question?
The site with the structure on it will be served by well and septic that currently exists on the property. The vacant parcel, which will have eventually after approvals of the town, we're going to construct, is intended to construct a single-family residence and it will be served by public sewer, public water.
So I guess when would that happen?
Well, we have a contract for, to construct the home on that property, so I would anticipate that, that they would be, I don't know how long it takes to get the utilities, but they're, they plan on using public water and sewer, so they're going to connect.
My, I guess, I have one quick question is, is the, is the health department okay with what is, was happening with this? I guess that's more directed to Andy.
How do you mean, Joe?
Well, I mean, is it, is it conformance with the septic system that's there and you're calling it a, you know, if it's called a single-family residence, is the health department on board with the amount of square footage the lot is? I mean, they, they have a minimum or somebody has a minimum of an acre or whatever for, for a septic system or approved septic system.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They need to get, they need to get the signature of the county on that, the county health department, Joe. If they don't get it, they're not going to be able to file the map and if they can't file the map, they're not going to get their subdivision.
Okay.
So they're, they're going to have to get the stamp of the county on their septic that exists.
That's correct.
If there is one that exists.
I, I think Chris said there was.
Yeah.
Didn't you, Chris?
My client advised me there was, yes.
Well, I will tell you who's going to check, Jeff Tell over at the county, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just bring it up that, yeah, I just bring it up that, that it would, it would come up to some point in time.
Yeah, it will.
Yep.
Thanks, Joe. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I've made the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Kathy, I.
Doug, I.
Leif, I.
Kevin, I.
Peter, I. I think I heard Joe.
Yes, I said I, yep, yep.
Who was my second on that?
Doug.
Thank, thank you, Doug.
All right, Oliver subdivision. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the subdivision plan is presented with the following findings. Is there any questions relative to this subdivision? We've talked about this at our work sessions.
Is Mr., is Mr. Oliver here? I mean, he said he was going to be a little bit late. Should we, I think we maybe should wait for him and do our concept and then come back to it.
That's fine, but I just want to make sure the board is comfortable with what we're proposing with the simple subdivision. And I guess that building will be removed.
The shed.
This is the realignment of the property line in the lot.
Yeah, with a shed being, that's kind of on the line or over the line.
In the small garages, so the small shed will be removed, right?
Correct, yep.
So the object across the line is being removed?
Yes.
No, no, just the shed, Kevin, not the garage, the garage is going to be now included in the lot.
Got you, okay, so there's a garage and a shed, they both have an issue, but the shed's gone with the garage.
The shed's going to be gone, yep.
Okay, well, we'll wait then, Jamie, at your request. Alter Dairy, Jim, are you, I think I saw you earlier.
Yep.
I mean, just recently. Do you want to take the lead in, in, this is a concept review, relative to the expansion proposing a 6,500 square foot wastewater treatment facility and a 42,000 square foot building addition in High Tech District. So Jim, do you want to give us an executive overview of everything that you're planning? And I don't know if this is the third, fourth, or fifth phase.
It, it's certainly becoming an annual event, isn't it, Peter?
Yes, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, so also on the call tonight is Dan Wood, our chief operating officer, who is much more technical, much more technical than I am, so, but I think together we can, we could kind of paint the picture here. Emily, if you have access to the master plan build-out, I just want to touch on that first briefly. There we go. So my thought is, is to just touch on this briefly and then probably never come back to it ever again for a couple of years, but I, I thought it was important for the board to know that this is really kind of the beginning of the end of expansions at Ultra. We're, we're literally running out of room. So we thought it was important to take a half step back and, and look at what resources we still have available, what areas we still have available, and frankly, what we want to do in the final stages of build-out of the plan. It's been quite a journey over the last 17, 18 years, but you know, everything has a beginning, middle, and an end and, and we're reaching the end of expansions here. So you'll see on this, this master plan, which obviously is always subject to change, you'll see the two separate projects, if you will, that we're proposing now. One is the wastewater treatment facility to the north and west in the salmon color and the other is the 42,000 square feet of processing space on the west side of the existing building. And then moving into the future, the green area there is pretty much what we have left in terms of space. So you know, while I was joking before that this is an annual event, it, it kind of is, but it's only going to happen for a couple more years because again, we're, we're kind of reaching the end here.
Jim, before you, you get there, you, we had discussed offline, the commitment not only to the town, but is not just in this parcel, in a companion, the New Venture Gear ONX-1 commitment you've made there. You might want to refresh the board's memory as to what you have.
Sure.
Long-term invested in that project.
Yeah, so it's, it's a couple of things actually. At the, at the New Venture Gear building across Fly Road, we have been leasing there 100,000 square feet of dry storage space for almost 10 years now. We just signed on for an additional 60,000 square feet. That'll take us through 2029. And quite frankly, we're looking at another, how big is that space, Dan? Another 75,000 square feet to the north?
About 75,000.
Yeah, so, and, and the board may also be aware that just to the south of the, the Ultra property itself, the old American Cancer Society building property, we purchased that as well. So while I say this is the beginning of the end, we're not going anywhere. We're just going to be kind of limited in our growth because of geography.
But I just think it's important to know the full context of this, of Burn Dairy or Burn whatever you call yourselves now and, and the commitment you've made, 235,000 square feet plus the other building. So I know that, I tried to make the board aware of this, but I, I didn't realize the additions that you've had in a long-term leasing. Okay.
Yep, again, so we're, we're certainly not going anywhere and we're heavily invested not only in this property, but also New Venture Gear and, and as I said, the former American Cancer Society property. So I, you know, I don't want to put a whole lot of credence in this master plan because as, you know, the green area, for example, is wholly without detail. We have a couple of options of what we can do in that space in the future and, and when it comes time to address that space, we'll do that. But I did think it was important for the board to see kind of where we're looking in the future and, and both with these current projects and then kind of what's left to do. So anybody have any questions about that, about kind of the master plan? If not, Emily, could you go to that site plan? Yes, thank you. Okay, so this drawing, and I know, I know it gets confusing in terms of the phases and designations, but this is what we refer to as Phase 2, 2A and 2B. 2A being the wastewater treatment facility, thank you, and 2B being the 42,000 square feet of processing space attached to the existing facility. The wastewater treatment facility, we've, we've talked about off and on for probably seven, eight years. It's something that is vital to our business. Unfortunately, in addition to being in the dairy processing business, we're also in the wastewater treatment business, just as a matter of course. And our current wastewater treatment facility that's located within the building itself is nearing its capacity. We've talked for years about the capacity issues of the, of the town sewer line that runs along 481 and Ultra's discharge into that sewer line. Currently, Anadaga County is in the process of building a force main sewer along the south side of Benedict Road and this proposed wastewater treatment facility would tie into that new infrastructure being put into place by Anadaga County. Is about 6,500 square feet. It includes, and Dan, this is where I'm going to tap out to you, a couple of, four of what we call equalization tanks that allow for a consistent flow of water into the, into the treatment, in the treatment equipment and then into the sewer itself, as well as what we call a sludge tank, which collects oils and fats in a semi-solid manner and is, is hauled off-site for use either in biodigestors or is land spread on local farmland. There is also incorporated within the wastewater treatment facility, a tanker wash bay. Again, one of the little secrets, I guess, that, that most people don't realize is that when milk or cream is brought into the facility in a, in a tanker, we, we are responsible to wash that tanker before it leaves the site. We currently wash the tanker in the same space where we unload the milk or unload the cream, thank you. And frankly, what that does is it ends up kind of backing up traffic, if you will, because even once the tanker is unloaded, it's going to sit there for another 40, 45 minutes while it's being washed. So by including a separate tanker wash facility with the wastewater treatment facility, we can keep traffic moving, if you will. Dan, do you want to put some kind of technical color on what that facility is going to do?
Absolutely. Yeah, the facility, as Jim had mentioned, is broken in the, the Phase 2A wastewater treatment plant, is broken into two separate entities. One is where we treat the water and unlike some other larger facilities where they treat it and they have digesters and whatnot, as Jim had mentioned, we actually separate out the fats and oils that, that come as part of the milk, similar to the process that we have in place now. The scope of this piece of the work is 475,000 gallon holding tanks that we call them equalization tanks. And what they do is they keep the surge, they allow us to treat the pH so that they're, the DAF, which is a dissolved air flotation system, extracts as, as much of the oils and fats as it can before we put it into the, the force main. So there, we actually have two of those existing on the site that we've added over the course of the last couple of years, so we'll put two new ones in and then relocate these. We put them on the backside of the building so that it kind of was covered by the, the front side of the building. One of the items that Jim had pointed or had put in the executive summary, and you can see some of the landscaping, is a very significantly upgraded landscaping plan to form that, that campus kind of feel as all of the colors, all of the, the design of the buildings kind of follows all the way around from the southeast side all the way up to this one. So we'll use exactly the same finishes that we have and also update our landscaping to make it a little bit more, a lot more robust in bringing that park-like setting, if you will, to it. And it also shields a little bit of the, the silos and a little bit of the structure as well. So the, that portion of it is really about having two of these DAF units, dissolved air flotation units inside the left high-end side of the structure. And then, as I mentioned, just behind that are the two, or the 475,000 gallon tanks. What you see in that little indent on the north side is a, the sludge silo that Jim had referenced, it's a stainless steel silo, similar to the ones that we have outside of the building on the raw receiving area. And what's different about this structure versus what we have now is the sludge trucks would pull into the bay from the, the road and so there would be insight as they offload and that helps keep them kind of out of, out of sight, out of mind and a tendency versus right now, we park them out on the, the west side of the building. So the traffic flow for the wastewater is really only about that one truck that comes through. We do it every day, sometimes up to two times a day, depending what product we're running. So that's really the scope of this building. It's more or less a U-. So that's really the scope of this building. It's more or less a utility building, but looking from the outside, as I had mentioned, really carries the architectural finishes that we have everywhere else in the facility around. So you won't drive by and say, boy, that's a pretty ugly utility building. It looks like another one of our campus settings. The other half of this is the tanker wash bay, as Jim had indicated. When we bring either cream or milk into the facility, we unload it, it takes a half an hour to forty-five minutes, and then we have to wash it, which takes a little bit longer. One of the concerns that we had is about stacking up trucks. So nobody wants to see all these trucks lined up. By putting this in, it breaks that two-function process into two separate functions. So we can keep everything kind of in movement. And the flow of that traffic is if you come in from Fly Road, go down Benedict Road, just like we do now, the trucks turn right, heading south right after our transformer station, go over the scale and then unload inside the the building. Exactly. Thank you. Appreciate that. They go in and unload inside the existing bay, then they'll come out exiting from the southeast, come around like they're leaving the site. And then they'll go into the wash bay and they'll wash. As soon as they get through the wash bay, they'll go right around and almost like a well, three hundred and sixty degree and then exit the way they came in. And that's the process flow that we have now. So it actually adds one more, probably about a four hundred foot section where these trucks are going through to get washed versus having them stack up. And one of the things that we want to avoid is having them stack up either on Benedict Road or on the site because it doesn't really add to the architectural features. Have a bunch of trucks sitting there. This facility, the way we designed it, the way we laid it out, will actually work for all of the expansions that we would do at Ultra until we're at the end of that. As Jim had mentioned, everything that is in the last phases will be accommodated with these changes that we articulate in the the tanker wash area as well as the waste treatment. So there will be no more upgrades to that. Are there any questions to what I went through? I went through very quickly. I apologize, but I'd be happy to field any questions that anybody has.
It, you know, the question I have, and it's sort of we talked about this previously is the traffic pattern. It seems kind of convoluted, but could you say how the actually improves it? So the stack, it improves the stacking. It minimized the stacking. I guess I'm having trouble with it with the truck enters. Is how that's going to look more of a campus feel versus a garage? I just. You don't have elevations. Yeah, that area.
Yeah, we don't have the elevations in this. The the exterior of the building is going to be this split face block and we have the the tanker bay doors, which are going to be painted to accentuate the building. So they won't look like a a big, you know, industrial garage per se. One of the things that we really want to do is we want to be very cognizant of the element of trucks sitting there idling as they will tend to do if they're waiting to to unload. That's got a big visual effect and a big noise effect. And of course, air pollution as well. We want to be very cognizant and respectful of that. Nobody wants to see that. The diesels idling out there. This basically takes to the point where we have nothing staged. We actually have three bays in the main building and two bays in the wastewater treatment plant. And we went with the two bay because some of them can wash inside the existing space. But all the balance will wash outside in the the new tanker bay. The the way that we do it now, as I mentioned, it they go around, they wash in a lot of cases because we're not bringing our own milk in. We actually have to send them over the sales, excuse me, the scales. Once when they come in and then once again, when they go out. By putting this in, we're actually not really changing the existing traffic flow. We're just keeping it from backing up because they'll weigh when they come in, even though we get weight tickets, we also weigh them. And then when they're empty, then they weigh again. So it actually, it doesn't increase the amount of traffic flow. It just puts an interim step of I can go over and I can wash while another truck goes into the bay. Not sure if that answered your your question, Peter, but I hope it did.
Well, it it's enlightening. I just, I think that the rest of the board now should weigh in as to whatever questions they have. These are all, all the tanks will be stainless steel. You mentioned, I know one is, but when we talked briefly before, they're lower profile, but they'll all be stainless steel.
Yes, they will be all stainless steel.
Will they be higher than the building mass itself?
I'm sorry?
Will they be higher than the water treatment facility structure itself?
The the small one in the front for the sludge will be higher. I believe total elevation above finished floor is sixty-six feet. The other ones are just about adjacent with the top of the facility, maybe plus or minus a few feet.
How tall is that facility?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall. I think it is twenty-eight or thirty feet.
The sludge tank sixty-six feet?
It's the above the finished floor. It's sixty-six feet. It's about sixty-two, and then you throw on the the matte foundation.
Okay, so it's three times the height of the building.
Yeah, about that.
Quick, Dan, you said, once you come through the treatment facility, you'll go back onto the scales, correct?
Yeah.
And then these trucks will come out through this central.
Yes. It's the west.
Okay, so then they they'll continue out that way.
Yep.
I'm going to ask a crazy question, and I'm sure you guys have looked into it. But is there any possibility of changing the flow of things and relocating this facility over here somewhere so that you could drop off the opposite direction? And then immediately go into the wash tank and then go get weighed?
Yes, it's a very good question. The reason we can't move it over there, and we would love to move it there is because that's also where that location there is where our main gas line comes in. And it's a high-pressure, very large gas line that we want to maintain a very respectful distance from that. Also, if we were to put it over there, because of the length of the trucks and the and the cabs, you have to have a fairly good distance to be able to get out of the bay and then into a wash bay. One of the options that we did look at is could we extend the existing tanker bay back a couple of hundred feet? And that way we could unload and then move forward and wash. What it did, though, is if you if you look at the arrow that's going past the the, yeah, exactly. Thank you. In that area, it really narrows down. And so it would be basically a one-lane truck lane as we went through there. And so we would still have the tank or the trucks backing up. And it's mostly driven by the fact that we have that big gas main coming in there. So relocating the gas main would be very problematic, mostly because it's a huge gas main that would require basically coming out from, I believe it's just south of Fly Road, moving that entire thing over. And then we still have to deal with the parking for our employees. So we want to be very respectful for the fact that we leave enough space for that.
Yeah, I thought I was thinking kind of with that, that it would actually get you closer to where the sanitary is gonna end up coming out. So you'd end up cutting up less of the driveway and the parking lanes here and less of that utility. I, you know, just thinking of it in terms of maybe it's cheaper to relocate the gas main than it is to run all of this additional piping and and the waste pits and, you know, all the other pieces.
Yeah, it's a very reasonable question. We, when we look at the way that the the force main is going in, that the county is putting in, it's it's over near the northeast corner there. It's kind of hard to see, but yes, exactly, just a little bit over to the west from there. It's a little counterintuitive to say, we're going to pump out of the wastewater treatment plant. We're going to go east along Benedict Road, go into the pump station, then way back west. Basically, they're going to cross each other. That's not the most efficient way to do it, but the the cost of putting in an eight-inch force main, or in our case, it's a gravity fed, is probably about five percent of the cost and complexity of relocating a gas main. The the gas main being a high-pressure line and very critical to the operation, we basically shut down the plant for about a month to do that, which would be a little problematic. It's much easier to put a gravity feed line in that's going back to that lift station than it is to to try to move that around. And we get very tight on real estate as we get closer and closer. So I would like to keep this wastewater treatment plant as close to the building as I can. But from the the size of it and the orientation, as well as just the access to that there, we've looked at a lot of options. I would love to put it really close to the corner. We just don't have enough real estate to do that.
Other questions?
Is Benedict Road a town road?
Yes.
I mean, I guess what are our thoughts on the fact that internal truck traffic operations are entering and exiting the property on a town road in order to perform? You know, the circulation patterns that they need. The wear and tear on that town road and access to others. It it's a little bit unusual to do it this way. That's that's really a question comment more than anything at this point that's going to linger with me for a while as we as we go through this.
Yeah.
What kind of traffic are we talking about in this? How many trucks per day?
Right now, what we're looking for within the next year is about fifteen trucks a day at the maximum that this site will hold. It's probably closer to thirty trucks a day.
And you're not anticipating any queue to to wash?
I'm sorry?
You're not anticipating there would be any truck queue in this circulation pattern to do the the truck, the the tank washing?
No.
They would be sequenced and orchestrated such that.
Yeah, we actually did a fairly extensive study to see exactly how many bays that we needed. And based on the the balance of cream and milk that come in and the ability that we can actually wash some of them inside the existing bay. It balances to the point where most of our time will be spent inside the existing unload bay versus the truck wash bay. So there should be no stacking up of vehicles.
And the truck wash bay is entirely inside the building, yes?
Yes, they roll in and we close the doors to wash the trucks.
Are the holding tanks, are those open air or enclosed?
They're enclosed. Yep.
And and for a facility like this, you know, given its importance, critical nature, actually, as as well as the forced main station. What what is there for backup power and generation? Is that infrastructure that's already in place or is that part of this new work?
There is no backup power for the existing infrastructure or future, mostly because the the amount of power that we would need is very significant. One of the the reasons why we're putting these extra tanks in is it is it gives us about I think at the calculations, about eighteen hours of available downtime where we can just accumulate the water before something, we basically shut the plant down. Just as I got here, I've been here about five years, we put in this transformer station. And that's significantly increased our uptime with the power. We spent a lot of time working with National Grid. And I think over the course of the five years that I've been here, since we put that in, I think we've had one power outage. Which was really the reason why we put that in. So that we could maintain a higher uptime than what we had in the past, which was, I think, like every other month we were down.
I recall that in the previous presentations in years past that there there was discussion about capacity and some of the neighboring sanitary lines and perhaps some backups and I guess some other other issues that maybe this facility was contributing to, maybe not. I I really don't, I don't know, but I don't know if that's a, if that's something that needs to be studied or needs to be discussed, particularly with with Mark Parish at some point or the town. Or maybe.
But Mark is being brought into this in total.
As far as. Go ahead. I was gonna say, Doug, if I may, you know, the idea of the force main running along the south side of Benedict Road. That's where Ultra now will will be sending its wastewater, not along the 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 four eighty-one line, if you will.
I see. Okay.
And I believe I'm not quite clear on how far north the new force main is going to go, Dan, maybe you know, but Fulton Boiler, who is immediately to our north. And then I think beyond that Inficon and you know, you get up to the spine center. Smaller users of water, they will all be directed into the force main. So that I believe that the the existing forty-one line, if you will, will will be picking up the the residential continue to pick up the residential water on Lion Street and over to Franklin Park. But the big contributors to the line, if you will, which is probably us and Fulton Boiler. Will be going into the force main.
I see.
Yeah, and that fourth thing goes across Fly Road. And then it ties in, I think currently it's it's going behind new venture gear and then kind of up on the the west side of the facility to tie into, I think it's a thirty-six inch line up closer to New Venture Gear Road. There, I think it's very close to where the the hotels are up there. So it kind of bypasses the whole area. And as Jim had noted, a significant amount of the water coming through the existing line comes from ourselves and Fulton Boiler and a few other facilities up there, and that'll all be gone. So that will have a marked reduction in the use or the flow of wastewater down through the existing lines.
Any other questions?
One more question, Peter. Because this, the tanks are fully enclosed, there there really isn't an issue with odor. Or, you know, open effluent in the vicinity of this facility, yes?
That is correct. Yep, there will be nothing that there will be even visible or there being no aromas. And by by loading our sludge inside that building, unlike what we do now, you won't even be able to see that there's an operation related to that.
Good.
Yeah, Dan, do you have like a like a prime event system or something that's going to be installed in there?
I'm sorry, oh, what?
Like a prime event system for the diesels?
Um, no, for the, well, we have a vent system, yeah, that that exits the, it's an exhaust, excuse me, an exhaust system that ties into the diesels. Our our rules and regulations are you pull in and you shut it off immediately and you don't start up until you leave, but we have exhaust systems built in there for the stack exhausts.
Okay.
This facility very loud while it's in operation or?
Nope, you, it's got pumps on in the inside of the building, but you can't hear from the outside. There's no no big exhaust fans that you hear any whining or any of that or any pump whining.
Can you talk to me just a little bit about that there's two, there's a waste pit outside of the building here and then another? Can you just tell me exactly what that is or?
Absolutely.
Tamed or what it looks like?
Yeah, what they are is big concrete structures that are they're flush on the surface. They have concrete lids. Some of them are concrete lids, some of them are stainless steel lids. And they're basically where we collect all of the water. And that gives us a little bit of float, if you will, to say if some one of our pumps goes down that we can actually, we won't overflow any systems. The the one that's existing, the first one that you circled is one that we just put in with the last phase expansion. We basically doubled the capacity. We went down to the the second one that you circled. That is basically another lift station. And that's about two times as big as the existing one. And the reason for that is also to give us a little bit of a float. As product runs down there, the wastewater runs down there. It's much easier to balance the flow and it's also very important, especially with wastewater systems, to be able to stabilize the flow inside of our DAFs. And that's what gives us the ability to do that. And it also gives us the ability to make sure that there are points along the way, if you ever have to clean them out, which we do about every year or so.
What's the next step, Jamie, Andy?
Well, I think we need more information on what the facility is going to be and look like and and elevations, obviously more detail in general.
Yeah, no, I assume that I'm just meaning, is there any I was bringing Mark, Mark Parish in on this. And I'll work with them.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's good to have the concept presentation. I think it's now just just getting down to the the details. It's 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 just big site plan. It's site planet. It's it's best.
Yeah, well, we we will, I think the next step would be some work sessions when you're ready. Yeah, well, we, we will, I, I think the next step would be some work sessions when you're ready.
Yeah, we're going to want to talk about, uh, what the visual impact is along the public side of Benedict, the. To help the process of tying these structures together through a landscaping approach, along with an architectural approach.
Yeah, and, and, uh, on the, on the, who's building the force main? I see it says there's an easement, if I can read it correctly. Is that the county or is that you?
Doing that.
The county.
So what's, what's the timeline for that to happen regarding this project? Cause that's got to happen first.
They can actually happen fairly close to concurrently and that's the plan, the agreement that we have with the county is. They'll both be in place. I think it's May of next year is when they have assured us that that will come online. We, we can finish the, uh, the wastewater plant and tie it into the existing because this is really built for the future. And we don't have to run it at full, uh, capacity. So we can actually connect this to the existing. Until they finish their construction of the force main, we're pro, we're targeting to finish this. Uh, phase two A here, January, February of next year. So a few minute, a few months before they finish the force main, but. We would run all the pipes up to make the final connection and then just do what we call hot swap. As we're, we just shut it down momentarily and redirect the flow to the new line from the old line.
And we know that the force main is a definite go. They're, they're committed to that?
They are in the bidding process right now. Uh, CNS engineers are the, the construction managers and we talk to them very frequently on. The location of their pipes and, and our pipes and the elevations and all that. So they're, they're well into this project.
Yeah, they, they plan to be in the ground in August, Doug.
So it's actually a lot of infrastructure, uh, laterally to this project too. Uh, over on Pheasant Road, National Grid is doing a, a, a large high pressure gas line. Uh, down Pheasant Road, uh, to accommodate the residents and businesses over there as well as the Amazon project. So there's, and then we're going to be moving north with a, a large for, force main sewer system, which is going to, uh, totally, uh. Uh, help, uh, burn dairy with some of the, mitigating some of the issues that they've had in the past. So it's a lot of good things are happening with this.
I guess I wonder is the, is the structure associated with the force main going to be, uh, coordinated with the architecture? Or is this going to be a county thing?
No, actually, they're.
It's gonna be coordinated.
We, uh, we've, we've spent a lot of time with them and their, uh, almost verbatim words are, you tell us what you want it to look like and we'll make sure that we do it. So they're very, uh, they're very cognizant of the importance of establishing that campus-like feel, making sure that it doesn't stick out like a, a sore thumb.
Yep.
Well, thank you. This has been very helpful.
Yep.
Uh, Jim, appreciate the, uh, very detail, but if you got that timeframe, we. Need to, uh.
We need to keep moving, sure. And if, uh, you, you know, I would ask Peter and, and, um. And Emily, if, um, if. Granted, details need to be filled in. If there's, if there's specific areas that, that you want more detail on, uh, sooner rather than later. Um, we're all ears. Please, please, um, we'll provide you whatever information you're looking for. Um, and it, and it will probably help us help you if we had an idea of, of what your major areas are concerning.
Emily, I'll, I'll delegate that to you and then circulate to Nick and Andy and. And then they'll circulate to the rest of the board and maybe that'll key other, other questions that they may have.
Yeah, I, I think, I really think the big thing, this has been very helpful. Thank you. And I, I, I tried earlier to. Uh, describe the orchestrated, uh, truck traffic through here and I apologize, I butchered it. So I'm glad you guys. Uh, filled in what you did. Um, uh, this is obviously operational and it is a high-tech zoning district. And being the, the, really the kind of, the first thing that you see coming into this campus, which is, you really did a great job with it. Uh, I know there was some concern, uh, with board members on the appearance of the wastewater treatment facility. So I think. Keeping that, you know, forefront in your minds as far as the design, uh, screening, landscaping, architecture is going to be really key here.
Yeah, this is a very big curb cut we have here. So we're, we're gonna want to beef this up as best we can.
Yep.
Um, and I guess maybe even thinking about in terms of if, you know, something is getting built in here in the future. You know, maybe we can plan for some screening for that as well.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. And Emily, will you draft something?
Yes.
And circulate. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Okay, Oliver subdivision. The great comments, by the way, uh, Doug and. Uh, Emily and everyone, I appreciate the. The diligence, uh, it's, it's a big project that they're. Uh, very committed to the town and to this location. Uh, Oliver subdivision is, uh, who are we looking for, Jamie?
Um, I think Mr. Oliver, but.
That would be the obvious request, but.
He had called, right?
Do we need, do we need him? I mean, this is.
I mean, we don't have to have him. We can carry on.
Let's carry on.
Yep.
This is a proposed lot line adjustment in industrial district. We've talked about this. Does anybody have any questions before I read the motion? Okay, hearing none. Motion to approve the subdivision plan is presented with the following findings and conditions. The simple subdivision of land under code is no new lots. I created this involves a movement of a lot line. This movement of a lot line between neighbors was necessitated because of the encroachment over a lot line of the garage. On the residential lot onto the property of the industrial site, lot line adjustment will correct the encroachment. Encroachment is a condition that has been in existence for a long period of time, so. So if not for the quote paper and quote encroachment, it would not be noticeable as the encroachment to the neighborhood. Accordingly, it is not of a general public interest and in conformance, uh, with the simple subdivision of land standards, a public hearing was not warranted. Only the two properties affected by the correction of the lot line would have an interest in the proceeding. Accordingly, and in light of the above, this board waives a public hearing requirement. This board has reviewed the EAF submitted by the applicant and issued negative. Declaration for the project. This board has received. On the County Planning Board Resolution, June second, twenty twenty-one, which found that said referral will have no significant adverse intercommunity or countywide implications. This approval carries the following conditions. One, prior to the chairperson signing the subdivision map, the shed on the residential lot must be removed from the property. As so consented by the property owner and further so that the encroachment onto the adjoining property is also resolved. This condition is in conformance with the comment by the, uh, County Planning Board referral. Two, the applicant must file the subdivision. Map in the county clerk's office in accordance with the rules of the Andi County. Provide a copy of the stamped file map, Town of the W, Planning Board, uh, Town Department of Planning and Zoning. So that is the, um, motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Doug, go on.
Kevin, I.
Peter, I. All right, um. Any other business?
My only business was I missed who made the, uh, the motion in the second on the, um. Uh, original, the minutes originally.
Was Lake and, Lake and Joe.
Yeah.
Lake and Joe?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Lake.
Okay.
Has there been any, has there been any advancement on the butternut, um, project and the traffic study and so on?
There, uh, so a little me, uh, information from the other side is that they are working on that. They're, um, I actually have a meeting with some of the ownership. Uh, tomorrow morning to see where they're at, just to kind of fill us in on it. And, uh, they're working on just making sure they get things done right. You know, so their, 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 their approach has been, let's take some time and get it right versus just do something fast.
Okay, and I've heard nothing new on, um. The adjacent property, the shopping town. Uh, I suspect we'll hear something within the next month.
When, when were those bids due?
Those bids were due February twenty eighth. I think that this will be, uh, that they certainly, the county is aware of the town and the planning boards, uh. Um, it was reflected in the, uh, RFP. So I, I know that they're taking into consideration, uh, we did meet, we, myself, Ed Michaelinko. Kerry Mannion and, uh. Uh, Terry Mannion met with, uh, Dan, and I can't recall the director of purchasing for the county. Uh, discussing the RFP and, uh, I'm not surprised. I think they've got our input as to what our expectations are in a multi. Use, uh, development here and, um. We just have to be patient.
Great.
Thank you all. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Doug, where's his hand? I like that.
Oh, do you want to announce our, our next meeting will be up?
I did that in the beginning.
Okay.
What about Tuesday morning?
Same time when I missed the minutes, I guess.
The Tuesday meetings will be, um, uh, electronic.
Okay.
And that'll be for the foreseeable future.
Okay.
Okay, I think that was the consensus if anybody, uh, feels that they'd really want to get together and have donuts. Uh. But I'm not delivering to your house.
So what's Andy doing with the donut budget?
I don't know, talk to Nick. I think, uh, hopefully there'll be room in the budget for.
I, I think it should change to order for the evening meeting.
Oh.
All right. Thank you all. Have a great weekend and, uh, great, uh, Fourth of July. We're also my anniversary, so.
Congratulations.
Uh, your, uh.
The anniversary.